Boarder, the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors meeting of April 10, 2018. Madam Clerk, would you take your role again?
Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Sure.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you.
Item 54 is the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act Hearing and Approval of Documents for Series 2018 Airport System Revenue Bonds Sacramento International Airport.
Good morning. Kristin Yates with the County Executive's Office.
Morning, Kristin.
Good morning. So today's item is a request of the Board to authorize the issuance and sale of the Series 2018 bonds to refund the remaining portions of the Series 2008 and 2009 County of Sacramento Airport System Revenue Bonds. And to conduct a TEFRA hearing as required by Section 147-F of the Internal Revenue Code of 1986 for the private activity portion of the Series 2018 bond issuance. In 2007, the county began the $1 billion Terminal Modernization Program. To fund this program, the county utilized the Airport Capital Improvement Fund and conducted three bond issuances. The first issuance was in April of 2008 when the county sold 586 million in bonds. The issue consisted of 337 million in new money and 249 million that refunded all of the then outstanding airport's debt. The county returned to the market a second time in July of 2009 and sold 480 million in new money bonds. A third issuance was done in July of 2010 when the county sold 128 million in new money bonds. And in 2016, the county advanced refunded a portion of the Series 2008 and 2009 bond issuances. The sale of 181.8 million of fixed-rate bonds successfully closed in December of 2016 and provided an estimated average annual debt service savings of 3.3 million. Current interest rate conditions provide an opportunity for the county to lock in debt service savings by refunding the remaining components of the 2008 and 2009 series. The board letter includes an estimated aggregate average annual cash flow savings of 6.8 million as of March 16th, but as of April 6th, that savings is now 7.1 million. We are asking for authorization to issue no more than 735 million in fixed-rate debt with an expected final maturity of July 2039. The County Debt Utilization Committee met on April 5th and unanimously approved this item and accompanying documents. Ratings for the 2018 bond issuance were received from Standard &amp; Poor's on April 6th. The senior bonds were rated A+. The subordinate bonds were rated A-. These ratings are one notch higher than the Airport System Revenue Bonds were previously. As part of this ratings assignment, all Series 2008, 2009, 2010, and 2016 refunding bonds were also increased one notch. Ratings from Moody's were received on April 5th. The senior bonds were rated A-2. The subordinate bonds were rated A-3. These ratings affirm the one-notch increase that was received from Moody's in October of 2017. No new money will be issued as part of this refunding, and if authorized by the Board, the 2018 refunding bonds will be priced during the week of April 16th and will close during the week of April 30th. Financing team is here to answer any questions you might have.
I don't see any Board members have any questions, although I feel like we should because it's John's last item. Can we drag up something, too? Thank you for your help in increasing the bond ratings. You know how much we appreciate that.
Yeah, the airports team has done a great job.
If there are no questions, I would...
Do you have to open a hearing or not?
TEFRA hearing, please.
Oh, it's a public hearing, so I don't have anyone signed up to speak. Open the public hearing. No speakers.
Who's the item?
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Item 57 is the approval of the Draft Five-Year Transportation Improvement Guide for 2018 through 2023.
Okay, there we go. Good morning. I'm Dan Schuman with the Department of Transportation. This is our annual update to the Five-Year Transportation Improvement and Program Guide, this one for fiscal years, or for years 2018 through 2023. And today, we're asking your Board to hear a presentation on the draft, tip G, take any public testimony, and then to approve the draft tip along with any revisions that we might discuss today. And then, following that, we will proceed with publishing and distributing the final tip G document. We have a second part to today's hearing, which is to request your Board's approval of a resolution and a proposed project list for the expenditure of Senate Bill 1 Local Streets and Roads funding during fiscal year 2018-19. So I'm going to start with a quick overview of the tip G itself, pause for any questions on that part of it, and then we'll move into the SB 1 matter. So the Transportation Improvement Program Guide details the capital improvement projects, roadway maintenance programs, and traffic operations programs that are recommended for the upcoming 2018-19 fiscal year and also future years. The document also describes the revenue sources that are used to fund projects and maintenance programs, as well as the processes that SACDOT uses in consultation with your Board to select and prioritize capital improvement projects and maintenance programs. Your Board's approval of the tip conceptually approves funding allocations to specific projects, authorizes SACDOT to pursue available funding opportunities for projects that might not have full funding, approve the priorities and funding allocations for pavement rehabilitation overlay projects. And then, it also adopts multi-year capital improvement plans for Measure A sales tax and for the countywide transportation development fee. I'm going to put up a couple of pie charts that describe the sources of funding that are represented in the tip. This first one is a five-year outlook of funding for the capital improvement projects. From this, you can see that the larger sources of funding come from state and federal grants, from development fees, both from the countywide fee and from financing plan areas, and from Measure A. And then, I also want to point out, there's a notable slice up there called "other," and this is a accumulation of funds from one-time or project-specific sources such as the CDBG funds from the Housing and Redevelopment Agency, contributions from utilities or developer fair shares for specific projects, or funding from other county departments for cooperative work. And this, of course, also includes currently unidentified funding needs that are represented in some of the projects. This slide looks at the funding sources for maintenance and operations, and this is just the 2018-19 fiscal year, so this is just a one-year look. And again, the primary sources come from the road fund, which is primarily the state gas tax. Also, we're including in the budget new funding from Senate Bill 1, and then, of course, Measure A for maintenance allocations. And then, we do get a significant share from federal sources for our overlay projects. This is just a list of some projects that were recently completed, completed within the last year, or are about to be completed, because I include Fulton Avenue overlay on that, which is actually still under construction, but it's expected to be completed sometime next month. So these are just some of the projects we completed countywide, a couple of projects doing sidewalk infills and intersection upgrades, the new Class 1 bike path along Excelsior Road in the Independence neighborhood, the second phase of streetscape and complete street improvements on Fair Oaks Boulevard through Carmichael Main Street, and the Highway 99 Sound Wall project, the completion of Saferaus's school improvements on Howe Avenue between El Camino and Marconi, and then ADA improvements at Madison Avenue. These have all been completed. So now, I'm going to give a brief overview of some of the, for the presentation here, lumped our projects in the tip into a few categories of similar types of improvements. This first group, we're calling major corridor improvements, and this generally involves work in the county's arterial and thoroughfare street corridors, and includes widening for congestion relief and capacity improvement, intersection upgrades, bicycle pedestrian ADA enhancements, landscape and streetscape improvements, and also interchange projects. And the tip represents about a $207 million expenditure over a five-year period. And I have a list of some of the projects that are in the tip under this category, including the Hazel Avenue improvements between American River and Madison. The Phase 2 portion between the River and Sunset will be completed by this June, and then, the last phase from there to Madison will go under construction next year. We also have the widening improvements on Elgro Florin and South Watt, running all the way from Gerber Road up to Jackson Highway, widening from two to four lanes. And then, future improvements on Madison Avenue and Power and Road, as well as the interchange upgrade at US 50 and Hazel Avenue, and a new interchange up at Interstate 5 and Metro area Parkway. Bicycle pedestrian ADA improvements include new sidewalks and bike lanes, signal upgrades, disability access upgrades in Saferaus's school projects. And the tip represents a total expenditure of about $36 million on these types of projects, and there's a list of some of the active projects that are in design or going to construction this year. The corridor enhancement projects involve the county's arterials that are already built out to their ultimate street configuration, so many of them are some of the more aging corridors in the county. And the projects here are focused more on improving safety and access for all modes of travel, as opposed to increasing capacity for motor vehicles. And the improvements in these projects are typically based on a streetscape master plan that's been done in conjunction with a more broader corridor plan or a special planning area activity. The improvements include new sidewalks and bike lanes, upgrades to the intersections, disability access upgrades, landscape and streetscape improvements, transit access improvements, and then rehabbing existing sidewalk and pavement. The tip's expenditure is about 35 million, and these are some highlights, the third phase of improvements on Fair Oaks Boulevard. This will complete the segment from about Marconi up to Landis and finish that Main Street project that has been underway. We have a new project to do complete streets and streetscape on Folsom Boulevard from Bradshaw Road west to La Riviera. That's thanks to a new active transportation program grant that we received as a result of the SB 1 passing. Some future projects on Greenback Lane and Watt Avenue up in the North Highlands area. And then, the second phase of streetscape on old Florin Town, on Florin Road, so the old Florin Town portion between Power Inn and Florin Perkins. The highway bridge replacements involves replacement of bridges that are either structurally deficient or, as they say, functionally obsolete. And these bridges are all funded by the Federal Highway Bridge Program. There are currently 10 active projects that are in design or will be going under construction in the coming year. There's a total expenditure in the tip of about $86 million on bridge replacements. And then, this last category is road rehabilitation and safety, includes pavement overlays, repair of curb gutter and sidewalk, disability access upgrades, speed control programs, and streetlight upgrades. The tip includes about $60 million of expenditure on the, there's about six different overlay projects that will be done by contract that are going under construction this year and next year that are represented in the document. And we also have three projects that are now out to bid, ready to go to construction this spring to install new streetlights in the Rosemont neighborhood, as well as in two South Sacramento neighborhoods. The county's ongoing neighborhood traffic management program is in this category where speed control measures are implemented in consultation with the neighborhoods. And curb gutter and sidewalk replacement is an ongoing program. So that's my overview of the tip G part, and I can take any questions on that before I move into the SB 1 request, or I can move on.
I don't have anyone signed up to speak, except for Mr. Serna.
Sorry, should have been quicker on the draw there. Real quick, I had a question down about the table that's on B-1-9. It's labeled roadway candidate locations for future overlay. And there's a, I'm looking at the, I guess it'd be the fourth and fifth rows where it's indicated there are some candidate locations for overlay from Fruit Ridge Road to Stockton Boulevard. And I'm trying to figure out whether or not these are nested, because it seems to me that if you're going from Highway 99 to Stockton Boulevard, yeah, I'm sorry, if you're going from Franklin to Stockton Boulevard, you're necessarily going to include Highway 99 to Stockton Boulevard. So how do I count for the 1.7 million against the 3.3 million?
I'm going to ask Reza Moghisi to help me give you a more expert answer.
Good morning, Reza Moghisi, Department of Transportation. I'm sorry, I was trying to find the location you were referring to, and I'm not sure whether I got the question correctly.
Okay, so it's B-1-9?
Yes.
Okay, so if you go to the top of that table, it's labeled roadway candidate locations for future overlay.
Yes.
So it'd be the fourth and the fifth row from the top? The question is, both are labeled, split between districts 1 and 2, and the length is along Fruit Ridge Road, and then, one is beginning at Highway 99 to Stockton Boulevard, the other is Franklin Boulevard. And there are two separate estimated costs, and I'm wondering why, are they nested or not?
Perhaps it's because a portion of the road might be in the city of Sacramento, and that's why it's different in the estimated cost.
Okay, good. And then, another quick question generally. How are the overlays going to be scheduled? In other words, if you're looking again at this table, and you see, look at the first row, you've got a PCI of 18 out of 100. So that against, I don't know, pick one, Powerline Road, Bayou West Elkhorn at 65. How are we going to prioritize these overlay projects based on the PCI, but also taking into account traffic volumes? So use and the urgency with which you need to do an overlay based on how much a roadway length is being used?
I think a number of factors we take into consideration, availability of funds and the type of funds that we have to work with. Some funds would restrict certain roads, for example, residential areas. We cannot use federal funds for improvements on those roads. PCI is a prominent factor in deciding what roads should be considered for funding. But sometimes, roadways have, segments of it have already been worked on in previous years, and we try to complete that road. We come up with several alternatives, and I think we coordinate that with your office in kind of finalizing the decision as to which road should be considered.
But I guess what I'm asking is, before you come to our offices to have that discussion, are you gauging how bad a road is versus how much use it gets? So in other words, if it has a terrible PCI ranking or rating, but we know it doesn't have, you know, it's rural, or there's just not a lot of use, do we put that off so that you can take care of another roadway that has a higher PCI? you can take care of another roadway that has a higher PCI but has a lot of use?
Yes, we do take that into consideration, the traffic volumes on the road, how much it's being used, and that factors in as well. But at some point, even roads with very light traffic need to be, you know, funded. So it is a matter of really looking at all these candidate projects and looking at the use, looking at the type of fund we have, and the PCI, and the segments or phases that we have completed previously related to the roadway. Those all come together and kind of goes into the decision of the recommended roadways.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Nussehaleh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Reza, while you're up there, if I could, just in, again, appreciate the coordination on the various lists. I know that in the last couple of months, we've had some outreach for a couple of the rural fire departments in the Delta area in particular as relates to condition of some of the roads. Some of it attributable to traffic that's been diverted from Highway 12 construction and the activities, not just diversion of traffic, but haul routes that were utilized that, again, I don't know that we have any ability to claim against anyone for those activities. Major reconstruction of Highway 12 from basically the Sacramento River to I-5. But my question being is that you have some Delta roads in there, but some of those, again, may require some rebuilding of those roads because we're... My understanding is that the fire trucks and emergency response vehicles are having a difficult time navigating and negotiating some of those roads in proximity, particularly north of Highway 12 there. Is that contemplated, just in, because I know there's other maintenance activities you're able to do, but it could result in a significant expenditure? Again, I, you and I haven't had a chance to talk about evaluation of those. I know you've been out personally, I think, and seen them in recent months. So I guess I'm trying to get some sense about within this plan, and again, you have the ability to come back, obviously, as you determine in the field and what needs to be done. But I'm curious, so Terminus Road, Jackson Slough Road, particularly north of the Highway 12 area there?
We have really a major challenge when it comes to levee roads in the Delta area because of the poor soil conditions under the best, you know, circumstances. But when you add to that traffic diverted from the construction zone, that makes it increasingly difficult to deal with. But we are doing our best to keep the roadways together so it would be safe for traveling public. I don't think in the case of Highway 12, we have, you know, we have recourse to ask for some sort of compensation as a result of that project, although we can approach Caltrans to see whether that, they would be willing to assist with the impacts associated with that.
Or like sneezing in the wind, but I just, again, but the damage has been done, I guess. That's the point. So again, I don't see some of these, those showing up on the list, and the PCI, I think in some cases, probably deteriorated even more so over the last, you know, last year or so. So again, I was just, again, I know you go over the list pretty frequently and are responsive when we get, you know, a major blowout or, you know, potholes and so forth. But I got to imagine some of those cases, particularly between the city of Iltan down to Highway 12, it's going to require, I think, us to take a look at how we can accomplish that work and get those in more passable conditions if we can, so.
Sure, we're all about that.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Frost?
Reza, I was wondering, I'm looking at B1, page 31 through 33, and I just wanted to ask, there's a bridge on Scott Road, and I know that you and your staff have been working with my staff and Supervisor Natoli's staff over time because this bridge every year floods, and we're trying to figure out what can we do to help this situation? And the cost of building a new bridge is not feasible at this time. And I know recently you did some research based on some input that we got for adding a culvert under that bridge that would allow the water to transfer more easily and hopefully help the flooding situation. It's not in here, which is, I understand, but I guess my question is, since that is such a, much less expensive to fix a problem, that's a huge inconvenience to that community out there, and that at times just completely floods, is there a way that we can be, have that in our mind to maybe add this to future, maybe to next year's plans?
Certainly. I think that location is one of the priorities for our department. We were pursuing some grants, grant funding for...
We're so excited.
Improving in that. But that didn't go through due to, you know, environmental permits that we need to have before we can do any work. I think our design section is right now looking at a cost estimate, and I expect that that will be targeted for some near future, in the near future, to be implemented in some level, because that road, I mean, that bridge or creek gets flooded frequently, and that causes a lot of inconvenience on the part of commuters. So we're very much aware of it and doing our best to come up with a solution for that.
Thank you so much for all the work you've done on that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? I would move to approve the Transportation Improvement Guide with the exception of project number 39, the Douglas Road extension. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And I need another motion on 39. I'm going to recuse myself to a potential conflict of interest on item 39.
Is there a motion?
I'd move the item 39 with Douglas Road extension in there, so.
Second. His vote?
Unanimous vote. Oh, excuse me, the motion passed, Supervisor Peters recusing.
Okay.
So now we have the second part of this hearing. If I can get the PowerPoint back. for the county's allocation of local streets and roads funding from Senate Bill One for 2018-19. And as you know, about a year ago, the legislature and the governor approved Senate Bill One, which created new funding sources for, that were focused on improving the state and local transportation systems. SB One created several new funding programs, but the most significant, at least for cities and counties, is known as the Local Streets and Roads Program, which provides up to a billion and a half dollars a year for local road maintenance and rehabilitation, safety and complete street improvements. And these funds are allocated to counties and cities by formula and not competitively. So similar to how we have the basic gas taxes allocated to us. Senate Bill One includes public accountability and transparency provisions that are intended to ensure that the funding from the new gas tax and the vehicle fees are spent efficiently, and also to allow the public the opportunity to review how the funds are being expended. So one of these requirements is that counties and cities, before they can have an allocation approved for a fiscal year, need to adopt a list of projects that are proposed to be funded using these funds during that fiscal year, and that list be part of a resolution that's adopted by the board or a city council at a public meeting. Your board previously approved a list for the current fiscal year, for 1718, and that was done last September as part of the budget hearings, the final budget hearings. This year and for future years, we're allowed to bring the list before you as part of a regular public meeting and a resolution, so we don't have to make it as part of the budget action. In 1718, or the current year, our allocation from the Local Streets and Roads Program is estimated about 7.3 million. This is somewhat below what is expected to come to the county on the average, and this is just because the actual funding sources didn't get implemented until into the year, so we're releasing a partial source. And, but with this year's allocation, we're either directly funding or leveraging state and federal funds for nine arterial project, overlay projects, some additional pavement rehab work on 24 county streets, and most of that work has actually been completed. We had some projects where we're doing ADA upgrades, sidewalk repairs, traffic signal system upgrade, that's a federal safety funded project that we're matching with the SB one funds, and then the streetlight projects. Looking now to 2018-19, which is what the list before you today involves, our estimated allocation for 1819 is $21 million. And this will fund, or will either fully fund or leverage state and federal funds for projects that are, again, focused on maintenance and rehabilitation, complete streets and safety. So the list that we have before you, which is actually called Exhibit A in your package, includes 17 projects. And within that are 12 overlay, or 12 arterial street overlays, and overlays within five neighborhoods, as well as some force account work. And these are the locations that, over the past couple of weeks, we have been meeting with each of you on to define the locations within your district. So those are now included on the project list. And just to tie this all back to the tip, the arterial overlays and the neighborhood overlays are represented in projects on pages A2-7 and A2-17. We weren't able to put the actual locations because of the time, but we will include all of those locations on the final version of the tip. The list also includes matching funds for federal safety projects to upgrade signals at 39 intersections, for some complete street improvements such as 44th Street and 47th Avenue, Florin Road, and then also matching funds, providing matching funds for our ongoing bridge replacement program. So with your board's adoption of today's resolution and the project list, we will submit this list to the California Transportation Commission. That list needs to be turned into them by May 1st, and they in turn approve the list and pass that over to the state controller, who then will begin to allocate the funds to the counties and cities as of July 1st of this year. So that's it on my presentation, and I can answer any more questions.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, and a couple of questions, or actually a comment on, I know it was noted in part of your report earlier, but just want to be sure we give due credit for the partnership with the Second Housing redevelopment agency on the Community Development Lockdown funding that has funded certainly a good portion of this streetlight work that's anticipated in Rosemont. I know it's helped with a couple of phases in South Sacramento and was a large contributor to the sound wall improvement, again, in District Two, but along Highway 99 between Florin and Mack Roads. And so that has been a source that has helped, at least in those three projects, maybe in others, and I just want to give due credit because that relationship with the Department of Transportation and recognizing neighborhoods, we're reinvesting in areas where older improvement standards and/or a need to upgrade in some cases where improvements weren't fully completed. I just wanted to make sure that was noted. And the other question I wanted to ask about was on the SB one list, and again, appreciate the work done with my office and with the others as well. In the event that, obviously, be a determination later this year, if it reaches the ballot on SB one and, you know, what its future is, but in the event that that decision is sustained and that funding stays in place, I'm going to ask specifically about the Rosemont area where we identified some neighborhoods, and the work actually won't occur until the 19 construction year, but we would know by November, I assume, the outcome of any ballot determination. And we identified other neighborhoods that for future years, and I guess my question is, if we were going to mobilize in that particular area with the ability then in the 19 construction year, assuming everything else were to fall in place, we'll do the repavement and overlays and so forth, could we bundle what's anticipated, one, what we're going to approve here today, but then what's anticipated for the following fiscal year, because we're not going to do that anyway until 19? So I guess, maybe you don't have any answer for me today, but I would like to see us to pull that together so we could do and get the economy of scale, but also then, you know, do basically contemplate two years' worth of work, assuming the funding's in place. And so I guess my question is, is that feasible, and what has to happen beyond knowing that the funding is certain to accomplish that?
Well, with respect to the SB one funds themselves, they are essentially under the same kind of guidelines that our gas tax is. So there is a lot of flexibility in terms of how you implement the work, and if it makes sense to bundle projects, absolutely, we could, you know, there's no restrictions that would prevent us from doing that with these funds. The other thing is that we have the ability during the year, if for some reason we determine that priorities change and maybe we are, we would not proceed with certain projects that are already on this list and want to do others, we can do that. And we can do that without going back and formally amending this list. We just simply have to report that at the end of the year that we did this location and not this location. It's really the whole intent of the list and this process is transparency and really just letting the public know what we're doing, and so.
I guess my question is, Dan, though, that, again, this is a process we do by board resolution, that in November, if we know the fate of SB one, and we know, then we can contemplate what the dollars are going to be, at least generally, for the following fiscal year, for the 1920 fiscal year. But the work's not going to occur until, you know, till, you know, late spring, early summer of 19. Could we do a package that could take the 1819 projects and what would be the 19, I guess, 20 projects, and accomplish that in that construction year, in the 19, in the summer of 19? So we could do a much, you know, fuller portion, and I'm looking at Rosemont, but there are other neighborhoods you're doing this, where you kind of have a phased approach. And because we only know what money we have this year, but in the event that SB one, you know, as I said, is sustained, that we know we're going to be getting X amount, and I guess I'd like to see us be able to package that so that in the summer of 19, we could actually do two years of what would be on the project list, at least in those neighborhood programs, recognizing that we go out the contract on those, you have to have the contract documents and so forth. And so I guess I'd like to see us either visit that towards the end of the calendar year or shortly thereafter in November so we could have some idea, because again, it seems to me, and maybe Ron or Mike can weigh in too, that the opportunity to do that, where then we could, you know, do versus what's going to be $2 million worth of work, it might be $4 million worth of work, recognizing that it's going to be the next phase we're going to attack anyway. So I guess I'd like to know thoughts on that.
Yeah, Ron Picari, Transportation Director. We would definitely look to try to capitalize on the economy of scale by packaging the projects together. The funding stream will come in on a monthly basis, so we'd have to look to make sure that in order to accumulate enough money to deliver the entire project, we wouldn't push the entire project to a following summer, and we would lose then, maybe the pavement would deteriorate to a point that needing a more costly construction project. So we'd look to try to save all costs we possibly can. So we'd look to try to save all costs we possibly can, and we'll revisit that as we see when the money, and in November, when we go to deliver the project, we'll look at that.
I guess it's my last call, maybe we could see this sooner. Obviously, the, you know, the project list has to come in a certain order to us, but again, if there's the ability, looking at what accumulates through the course of this year, but then, you know, assuming from November coming forward to the spring or summer, what we might be able to do, and again, there are other, you know, for the districts, obviously, other project considerations, but again, to try to advance that work, I think that's the whole idea on the delivery, that's why, obviously, you're here before us today, and I think there's been a real push to get this accomplished, but, you know, the fact is, is that what we're approving here today, in large part, at least in good part, is not going to be done until next summer, so we won't see it.
Correct.
We won't see it in the summer of 18. So what I'd like to see is maybe get the 18, 19, 20, and do a lot of work in the summer of 19, so.
Any other questions? Did you want us to vote on this?
There's a resolution that needs to be approved.
Move the resolution.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Item 58 is the Fiscal Year 2018-19 Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan and Technology Improvement Plan Review and Referral to the County Planning Commission for Project Consistency with the General Plan.
Good morning, Kristin Yates, oh, excuse me, good afternoon, Kristin Yates County Executive's Office. So before you today is the Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan, Technology Improvement Plan for Fiscal Years 18, 19 through Fiscal Years 22, 23. This year's Five-Year CIP includes 375 projects with proposed funding of approximately $1.1 billion, overseen by seven departments, airports, general services, D-Tech, regional parks, transportation, waste management, recycling, and water resources. The CIP also includes needed projects that are currently unfunded for the Departments of General Services, D-Tech, libraries, and regional parks. There are a total of 111 projects that would require funding in order to move forward. Many of the unfunded projects are not currently scoped, and a cost estimate has not been determined. For these, for those projects that have been reviewed for cost estimates, approximately $160.2 million would be needed. So upon your approval, the County Executive's Office will move forward the CIP to the Planning Commission for Review of the Projects for Consistency with the General Plan, and the CIP will then be brought back to the Board for Approval as part of the Fiscal Year 2018-2019 Recommended Budget. So there are representatives here from each of our departments, if there are any questions that you would like answered.
Does anyone have any questions?
Yes.
So shall we start with the Department of Airports, possibly?
Well, I suppose I'd say, are you going to do presentations by all the departments?
I don't have any thoughts on that.
We weren't planning on a presentation. If you have a departmental question, we have them ready to answer.
Okay, I do have some questions.
So Mr. Natale has some questions?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Couple different programming areas. First, I want to ask on libraries, if I could, and then I want regional parks, and then lastly, water resources, so. As Jeff's coming down on libraries, we have the 11A funding, and we basically have a number of projects, a lot of them have zeros in there, so they aren't to the point they haven't even been scoped out, but when it comes to, you know, I'm going to ask about a specific one, actually, I had a meeting yesterday with the city manager and the mayor of Galt about the Galt Library addition, and it shows all City of Galt funding. I know that I utilized some discretionary funding that was directed to help them with that first phase, and City of Galt put something in there, but it's, you know, it's now grown to $1.5 million for the addition. So how is it that with 11A monies, that it's only maintenance, and that either with construction, and I know there are other members of the board, want to ask probably about libraries, too, as it relates to maybe new construction? So where is it that we get a chance to talk about that, besides just replacing windows and fixing roofs? About libraries and, you know, either facility expansions, new libraries, and we share, obviously, this responsibility with the Library JPA, but I guess I want to bring it, I want to bring it back to this board, either today or some other early date, to have some discussion about libraries and facilities. Otherwise, we just kind of nibble around the edges here, and we do a little bit of paint, we do the things that are important to keep, you know, functioning and ADA accessibility, but we really don't have a very robust discussion about either 11A or any other funding sources, it just all falls back to, so again, I don't know, Jeff, you know, I've got...
Let me take a shot at it. Those are the concerns I've heard from a couple of board members, and part of what I want to have a discussion with the board, with my work plan, my review, is to look at the library master plan, 11A, there's a fund balance that we've been researching, and then bring it back to a board to have a workshop, because we have not, from what we can determine so far, there might be a little bit of history we're not seeing, our board's not had an opportunity to look in a comprehensive manner, what is the library, and what is your all's wishes? It does go to the JPA, there's work that gets done there, but as you know, that JPA has different members, but our board, as this body, has not had that opportunity, at least for the 10 years I've been here, to have a conversation where we need to take libraries. And also, to your point, we also are stewards for the unincorporated, but in there is the cities that have incorporated, the funding comes through us, so we have a dual responsibility for our unincorporated and some of the suburban cities outside Folsom, and City of Sacramento.
Yeah, well, I appreciate that background, and that goes to kind of at least part of the basis for a future discussion, but because, again, if all we look at is, in this list, is the things that, you know, Jeff and General Services, working with libraries, responsible for to keep, you know, the libraries accessible and, you know, and comfortable and so forth, then we never really get to have a conversation about, you know, whether it's 11A, or it's general fund, or whatever, because it just falls into CIP, and, you know, we just, it just stays the way it is, and so, in fact, the last new library, I think, is the North Highlands Antelope, North Highlands Library that we constructed, and so I think that's...
Part of that review with the JPA is that the JPA set up, very basically, they're supposed to be our operators, and the construction and what the future needs to be is with our board, and that's what we need to have a conversation, how do we do that? And then if there's construction need, and I know that Supervisor Frost, in her district, there's a need for Orangeville, other districts might have, we've not had that conversation, even prioritizing where we want our libraries. I know Supervisor Peters has some renovations in her district, and we're always behind the eight ball, looking for funding, because when we do our funding, all the other departments line up first, and then library is put to the side. So that's what I would like to have the conversation, is what's our vision, get a library master plan going, of course, working with RIFCA, not outside that, and then bring you back something and have a conversation about it.
Okay, so when would you think you would get that back to us? Is it pre-budget?
It won't be pre-budget, and it's going to take, I mean, the library master plan does take some time. I've just started internally talking about it, I've not even talked to RIFCA about it, so I need to get a timeline from her and bring it back and have a conversation about it.
Because there are developer fees as well, in some of the areas, that maybe, you know, again, it's fairly minimal, and it's going to take us probably 100 years in some cases to get enough developer fee to, you know, keep up with the construction costs, and so, again, so...
Again, it's developer fees...
The summer?
I would like to get it done by fall. I want to make sure it's a comprehensive look at it.
Will it include an examination of the budget that's within the library system, and what monies are available to the county for their own libraries?
Yes.
Okay, and I don't know, maybe I'll say the libraries, I didn't have any specific projects, that was kind of my question. Again, I've got some other in parks and such, but maybe also, did you want to...
Did you have something on libraries, Sue?
Oh, it was basically what you said, and there was some question as to what money was county's, and where the money belonged to that we were working on, so that workshop will include all that.
Correct. And that work is undergoing, at this point, we are working through where the money was accumulated, where it's a JPA, and where the money is allocated.
Thanks.
Okay.
Appreciate you bringing that up.
Got your next item, Don.
Okay, yes, just regional parks, if I could. Jeff, one area that I think needs to get, you know, some discussion, and it's not just parks, but I think, obviously, with the County Exec's Office, and this is, it relates to the Mather Wetland Preserve. We, you know, the fencing was in there, and there's, you know, and economic development's had a role in this, but we really haven't identified that, and I know that there's been, over time, discussion about, you know, we're going to do some work up to that and so forth, but there is a significant unfunded number there that may be contemplated with either future projects come through for development on the complex or elsewhere in the area, and so I don't know how that gets bundled up, but it's not reflected in any way that I'm familiar with the document, and so, again, it's not all on parks, it relates to, you know, some other things, but I think that that needs to be in some document somewhere, otherwise, it, again, to my point on the libraries earlier, it's not identified anywhere. So I don't know if you have any idea, you know, we fund some activities out there, and you provide ranger, you know, services and so forth, but there's a bigger number for restoration, enhancements, and so forth, that doesn't even have a solid number to at this point in time, even maybe an estimate, I guess, of 7, 10 million, whatever, but...
Correct, so we have not articulated in this document what would be the overall operating requirements for the Mather Preserve as it relates to the wetland manager, and we can work with the County Exec's Office on a strategy to identify those. We have identified the capital improvements related to the preserve here.
Well, some of, just the one, only just the fencing, there's other things that will come behind that, that aren't even included here, and again, there's no budget.
Overall, broader project, as Jeff is mentioning, we've not costed that, and as this document progresses, and we look at CIP on a very frequent basis, once we have some certainty what that number might look like, at this point, it's going to be a guess for us, and that's what Jeff's alluding to, is as this progresses, we have an idea what that dollar amount is, it'll come into the CIP either as funded or unfunded.
Well, and there may be some incremental improvements. This board has put some dollars in, again, you know, from a couple of different sources, and we are doing, you know, operationally, we have certainly have a preserve manager, and we've done some fencing and posting cable, and again, good work for the folks who are involved in that, but there may be other things that need to be done, and even identifying them incrementally, I think is important, so I guess that was my point, it's not so much, you know, a question about including it right now, immediately, but I think it needs to be included, I'd like to see it...
Yeah, in the future, absolutely.
Next year plan, okay. All right, that's all I had for parks, I don't know if anybody else has anything on parks, but...
You had one more?
Yeah, just one more, yeah, water resources, if I could. Good afternoon, Michael. Question for water resources is that this has a lot of new construction, inserting some rehab in it, and I guess my question is, is that we know we got an item, you know, a few weeks out, that's going to relate to certainly to rates that, you know, stand behind some of the debt, but also operating costs and funding for improvements. So by approving this CIP, are we somehow backing ourselves into what we're going to see as a board in a few weeks as relates to potential rate increases, considerations and so forth, that you're going to be seeking some direction on it? I don't really say I'm backing it, but there's a relationship there, obviously, so I guess...
Sure, I mean, this gives us a look ahead on, you know, what, on the water supply side, the large rehab projects that we have coming down, the Arden Service Area Project is really the big one. It doesn't lock us in, approving this doesn't lock us into any rate scenario, I mean, what, they definitely are connected, you know, there's funding issues, but then there's also timing of projects, so sometimes you have to move projects. We do have an imperative from a state standpoint to get the Arden Service Project done by 2025, so there's limited time to slide that project, but we'll have that discussion in terms of how things will be funded, because it's not entirely, it's not anticipated that rates would be the entire funding source for that Arden project in particular.
Okay.
Supervisor Natale, this is more of a planning document to give you an idea what we're thinking when we get to rates and funding. As Michael said, that's absolutely a discretion at the board on what we need to go forward, and if there's not, for whatever reason, if there's not a rate increase, it doesn't mean that this project is going to go ahead and get funded. The only deadline, as Michael said, is 2025 on one of those projects.
Right, I'm aware of that, I just, and I know there's some flexibility, but it does show years and projected expenditures, again, I know there's enough flexibility, but I just, for anybody that, you know, looks at this and says, well, this is what they're going to do in any given year, that's, it's projected, and you have to have the funds behind it to accomplish that, so, okay.
The key will be when we bring it back in June, and when you make the funding decision, what goes in at that point for the first year is the locked-in number at that point.
Okay.
This is just a plan at this point.
Okay, thanks, thanks, Mr. Chair. That's all.
Does anyone else have any questions? Okay, you're back. Flo, could I speak to you for a minute?
Yep.
Go ahead, Kristin.
So at this point, we just need approval of the recommendations to direct us to send this to the Planning Commission for Review, and then to report back the end result of
So we're looking for a motion, is that what you said?
That's what I'm looking for, yes, please.
Okay, so I'm going to move approval of the CIP program, except for four items that I'm recusing on, which are on the white screen. You'll probably have to enlarge it quite a bit. It was second on that?
Second.
Okay, so no further questions, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
I would move the balance.
Okay, so pointing out that...
The motion is for the balance of the rest of the items. It's been made in second, please vote.
Peters?
Thank you.
And the motion carries with Supervisor Peters voting, recusing.
Okay, thank you.
I think that concludes our business for this morning. I don't have any speaker sheets to cover any additional items, so we're going to adjourn, and we do have a closed session. See you back at 2:00.